Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Ironton City Council. It's sponsored tonight by the Ironton Tribune and by the Rotary Club of Ironton. And you say, "Why those two organizations?" Why not? The Ironton Tribune has served Ironton as the Ironton Tribune since 1928. Ninety-seven years. And that's the year that it merged as the Register and the Irontonian to become the Ironton Tribune. And Rotary was born in March, the first 1920, and is now 105 years old. So those two organizations have served in this community for a long time. And I guess that's why we're sponsoring this candidate forum this evening. I'm John Ferguson. I'm your host. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Berkeley and have been a Rotarian for many years. I want to thank the candidates as well as the residents who are here and those that are watching this evening. And I want to thank the Ohio University for being our hosts this evening. Tonight is a conversation. It is not a competition. I am, and I think we all should be grateful, for people who would be willing to take the time to serve our community and to make it an even better place to live. I moved here four years ago from California. I was born and raised in Ironton and wanted to come back and give some time before I passed away to my community. So here I am, and I am grateful to be here. I love its people. I love the community. I love the effort. And I'm glad to be with you tonight. Let's do a little bit of housekeeping. If you have a telephone and know how to work it, please turn it off. If you don't know how to work it, pass it to your wife and ask her to turn it off. And if you don't know how to work it, give it to me and I'll stomp on it. The audience tonight will be active listeners. And the questions will be asked by me to each candidate. Each will have an opportunity to answer the question in a given time period. Our timekeeper, Mark Comston, will give a 60-second warning and a 30-second warning. If you'd prefer to have a one-minute warning and it seems longer, we'll give you a one-minute warning. Depends on whether you went to school at Rock Hill or Ironton High. You can have it either way. After four questions, we'll have a five-minute break. And do you have any questions this evening? All right, we'll move forward. So let's begin. Oh, by the way, I've set this up so that each person, each candidate, will have an opportunity to answer one question first. We'll begin this evening with Bob Cleary. And we've put people together in alphabetical order. And the first question this evening is, tell us a little bit about yourself, your connection to the Ironton community, and the perspective or skills you hope to bring to the city council. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Cleary. I'm running for Ironton City Council. I've been proud to call Ironton home my entire life. It's where I grew up, raised my family, started my business, B.C. Tool Round, and spent more than three decades serving the community. I first ran for city council back in 1988, not because I was a politician, but because I cared about the city and I wanted to make a difference. I've served as councilman, vice mayor, and mayor from 1997 to 2003. And through it all, my goal has always been the same, to make Ironton a better place to live, work, and raise a family. During my years in office, we've tackled some really big projects that still matter today. We built a new water plant to secure, safe, and dependable service for our residents. And a side note to that is that we are now, 25 years later, looking to rebuild it again. We built new fire trucks and built modern fire stations so our firefighters had what they needed to protect our homes. I was proud to start the process that led to the Ironton Russell Bridge, including signing the original contract. I've seen the ups and downs from economic shifts to infrastructure struggles, and I know what it takes to find solutions that are practical, affordable, and rooted in common sense. I believe our focus must remain on three key issues: economic growth, that creates jobs, supports small business; infrastructure, that's reliable, water, streets, and services that meet the needs of the families; and community pride, continuing to restore our neighborhoods, improve safety, and invest in projects that make people proud to live in Ironton. A little side note to this, what I've said, is I signed the contract on the Ironton Russell Bridge to build it. And a few years later, five, six, seven years, I don't know how many, I actually cut the ribbon on it, too. So the bridge was dedicated on November the 23rd, 2016. Now I'm running again because I believe our best days are still ahead. We've made progress, but there's more work to do: improving our infrastructure, supporting local businesses, and continuing to build pride in our neighborhoods. With my experience in both business and city government, I know how to get things done responsibly, transparently, and with the community's best interest at heart.
Craig, will you? We're going to move on to the next person for three minutes.
Sure.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is-
Just an excuse. The reason for that is not to be rude, but it'll take two hours to do this with this many... So please go ahead.
Does that cut into my time?
Yeah. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Harvey, and I am running for reelection for the Ironton City Council for a fourth term. It's hard to believe it's already coming up on November, but here we are. Time to start thinking about Santa Claus and election season. And unfortunately, if you bought tickets to see me tonight, I have a prior engagement in Portsmouth at 7 o'clock. So best-laid plans with six questions. I just messed up your whole plan for this evening, and I'm sorry. I'll have to leave as soon as I'm done introducing myself. I came to introduce myself so that it didn't seem insincere coming from an email or a letter. I wanted to address the people that were here so that you know that I am committed to running for the city council again and that my heart is in it. I ran initially because I am raising four children in the city of Ironton. I myself grew up in Ironton. I am a fourth-generation Irontonian and am raising a fifth generation of Ironton. So I want to make Ironton the best place it can be for my kids, your kids, our parents, et cetera. So I have no other agenda than that. I would like to thank the Rotary Club for putting this together. I know how difficult it is to send a calendar invite to six people because that's how many are in my house and get rejected. So I'm sorry I have to leave you all this evening, but thanks to the Rotary Club and the Ironton Tribune for putting this together as a chance for all of these folks to share their vision for the city of Ironton. And I wish them all well, and I mean that sincerely because four of the six of us sitting up here are going to be serving the citizens of Ironton for the next four years. So I thank you, and I would hope to be one of those four people serving you, so I would appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
You may get the vote simply because you're reducing the two hours that people want to sit. If you take the questions with you and you have your own website, you could answer those questions on the website.
I don't even have Facebook.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to respond to the questions to you if you want to reach out. Teresa Smith is the one that emailed me.
No problem. It's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Good luck, y'all.
Thank you. Have a safe journey.
Thank you.
Nate?
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'd like to first thank the Rotary Club for putting on this candidate forum. I've had the opportunity to speak to one of their luncheons, and it's a great organization to have in the community, so thank you very much. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Nate Klein. I'm a 1999 graduate from Ironton St. Joe. I graduated at Marshall University in 2003 with a bachelor's degree in accounting. I got my master's degree in teaching from Marshall University in 2013. I spent most of my life working in finance and education. I'm currently a personal finance business teacher at Portsmouth High School, and I'm also a licensed insurance agent with Greg Gibson Insurance and Financial Services in Ashland, Kentucky. I'm very blessed to have three beautiful daughters, Addison, Carly, and Reese, and a wonderful sporting wife, and Melissa. They are my rock. I've had the privilege to represent Ironton residents on city council since 2017. As a council member, we're charged with two tasks: legislate, create and pass laws, and appropriate, allocate money. And I take it very serious. Over the last eight years, we've been very busy. There's been a lot of good things that have happened in Ironton. The city has invested approximately $30 million in infrastructure projects in the city of Ironton over the last eight years. This includes water and sewer plant upgrades, water line replacements, storm and sanitary sewer line separation, flood pump rehabilitation, and street paving. Many of the things have been neglected over the years that we, over the last eight years, have been playing catch-up and trying to get done. I've tried to make safety, community safety, a priority. We've passed laws to try to make our town safe, including laws addressing vacant property and chronic nuisance property, all while keeping a fully funded police and fire department. I'm very proud of all of those things. I look forward to discussing these accomplishments further tonight, and I look forward to talking about the future of Ironton. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Well, my name's George McAlvin. Again, I'd like to thank the Rotary Club. I was not born and raised in Ohio. I come from across the pond, but I married a girlfriend that was raised here in Ohio, and we moved back to Ohio. We've been living here in Ironton for 30 years now. A little bit about myself: I was a bricklayer all my life. You know, I put on the work boots and the old hard hat, and I went out there in slop and mud, and I worked really, really hard. I dug in deep. I did a lot of projects all around the world. I spent 32 years as a member of Local Seven in Kentucky. I'm retired now, but my last 15 years of employment, I pretty well worked mostly out of the country. So I see Ironton as a place that we need to come together in. My skills would be, I've run budgets. I've had to meet some drastic deadlines. I probably am not the most versed candidate up here as far as being able to answer all the questions. Our gentleman on the right, you know, they've been through this before. It's my first time, but I'm telling you what, I am eager to be here. I want to learn. And if I was lucky enough to get elected, I want these gentlemen right here and whoever is elected to help me. I'm probably going to be full of more questions. I'm going to be a pain in their butt, probably. But that's the only way we can get things done. So tonight, you might not get the political answers, but you're going to get an honest answer. So I would appreciate your all's vote, and I thank you all for coming out. Have a good evening and be careful going home.
Thank you. Troy?
Hello, everybody. I would like to echo what the other candidates have said and thank the Rotary Club for putting this event on and to Ohio University Southern for hosting this event. My name is Troy Scott. I've lived within city limits of Ironton for the last five years, although I'm very close to Ironton, and then I graduated from Ironton St. Joe 10 years ago in 2015. And that makes me feel really old. I don't know if, like, the 10-year continues to 20 and 30 and make you feel older over time, but the 10-year hurt a little bit, I'm not going to lie. So I graduated 10 years ago, ended up going to Marshall University where I got a degree in marketing and sales. And after that, I really didn't know what I wanted to do with my life, to be honest with you. I was helping coach St. Joe basketball at that time, and the head coach, Rex Cooksey, mentioned that he thought I would be a good teacher because I really enjoyed coaching. So I actually went back to get my master's degree in education where I taught at Boyd County for two years before moving into the educational technology space. So I worked with a lot of schools across the country, now in a nonprofit space where I'm able to just provide math resources to underprivileged students across the country in elementary schools. So I'm very passionate about what I do. And the way that connects to Ironton is I live within walking distance from here. My wife and I walk past here a decent amount whenever we go to the Shakri. This is one of our favorite places to walk past. And we just celebrated a one-year anniversary this month, so if you see my wife, tell her happy anniversary. That'd be great. Some of the perspective I hope to bring to the city is just a new perspective, to be honest with you. I think everyone up here that is an incumbent is a great person. But over time, new ideas are not a bad thing to bring into a city government or any government at any level. And some of the skills I bring, working in the nonprofit space, I'm familiar with the grant process and being able to find money for those things that we're looking forward to improve in the city over time. And the biggest thing, skill-wise for myself, is I think I'm very teachable. I don't know everything that the incumbents know, similar to what George said, but I'm willing to learn and I'm excited to learn, and I think that's one of the best skills that I have as a person. So again, thank you all for being here. I'm excited to spend the next, hopefully not quite, two hours with you. Hopefully, we can wrap up a little sooner than that, so I'll give you 30 seconds back on this answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Sarah?
All right. Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. I'm Sarah Simmons. In my career, I've spent about the past two decades in newspaper, and in that position, I spent most of the time listening to people, getting to know local businesses, hearing their stories and telling them. And most recently, I'm here at Ohio University Southern in communications and external relations, building partnerships, and again, listening, and that's a skill I hope to bring to councils, just listening. As far as my education, I hold a Master of Public Administration where I studied policy at Ohio University, and I hope to bring those skills, creative problem-solving, and using policy to advance our city. I also have a bachelor's degree in Appalachian Studies, so that applies to this area as well. And certifications in entrepreneurship and growing rural economies from Berea College, so I think my education, I would like to bring all of that to the table. It's helped me see both the potential and challenges of small towns, and I'd like to bring some solutions. Another thing that's important to me is I have a teenage daughter, which is more stressful than being up here, let me tell you. But I want to help make it a place that she wants to stay after she graduates. And if she wants to start a business, I hope she thinks it'll succeed here. As far as connections to the community, I've served on the Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce for several years and represented our area during Legislative Day at the State House. I really enjoy that and sharing all the progress we're making and asking the state to make further investments in us. I'm also a board member of Ironton Council for the Arts, where we bring high-quality shows to the area. We had an orchestra here last year. It was beautiful. There are also some brochures on the table out there if you want to pick one up. Also, the past president of Rotary Club, where we talk a lot about service above self, and that's how I see this position, public service. I'm also on the Southern Wayne Advocacy Council Board, where we try to connect people to our natural resources, and I see us being a great gateway to the national forest. And I would love to see some of the horseback riders who ride those trails spend some time in Ironton and draw those visitors here to spend their dollars and spend a little bit more time. Also on United Way Strategic Planning Committee, so want to bring some of that strategy. And I just believe in showing up for your community. I think I've been doing it for years, and I want to do it in a new capacity. Thanks.
The next question will be started by Nate, and here's the question. City budgets are often tight, and priorities compete for limited resources. How would you approach difficult financial decisions, manage revenue, and what guiding priorities would shape your choices? You have two minutes.
That's a great question. As I said, appropriation is one of our main responsibilities for city council. And so not only what would I do to tackle this, I have tackled this. When I first got elected in 2017, the general fund budget was zero-dollar balance. Since then, we've been able to build our general fund balance up to over $1 million. This has been through a lot of hard work: tightening the belt, strategic investments, and some good fortune as fought with our money. So I'm very proud of that. I have been able to chair our finance committee for the last few years. And how we tackle these budgets is we go into our budget workshops, and we have frank discussions with all of our department heads and the mayor. We start with putting those expenses that are needed first and priority for providing services to the residents, and we go through what do we need, what can we use, and get input back from department heads. Also, for the city, we strategically use asset management plans where we have life of assets for different departments, and we try to put money back into strategic funds where we can have asset replacement when those things are coming due for retirement. For example, we have a fire truck that we had just ordered, but it takes three years for that fire truck to come in. We've put money back into our equipment replacement reserve to be able to pay for that in anticipation of the expiring truck. So being proactive and addressing a lot of the needs is another strategy that we've tried to use.
Thank you. George?
Okay. Question was, city budgets are often tight and priorities compete for limited resources. I think we need to evaluate every resource. We need to pick our priorities other than our personal needs. We need to work with many, many resources such as brainstorming, workshops, taking extra classes that will improve our education to where we can do better for each and every one of you all. So, like I said, I'm probably not the most adverse. And we heard all about college degrees and everything here, even though I did attend this university right here. I taught two classes, having my bachelor's degree, and hopefully one of these days I'm going to come back and get it. But I have managed many, many large projects with large budgets. I've been fairly successful. I've only had one project that I did not bring in under budget, and that one still haunts me today. But I work diligently to work within our means. If it's not in our means, I'm looking for ways and means to get it there. So that would be what I would do. I'll just give it back to you, Mr. Moore. So, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you. Troy?
Yes, so in my current professional role, as I mentioned earlier, working with students across the country for providing math resources and camps and things, I have to make a lot of difficult financial decisions working within the region that I do. And at the end of the day, the question is always, what is going to support those kids the most, whenever I'm looking at the dollar amounts? And I think it's very similar to how the decisions should be made at the city level, The money that the city has, how is it going to impact the day-to-day lives of every resident that lives in Ironton? Those are the priorities for myself as far as any type of city or any type of government should not be making the lives of its citizens harder in any capacity, in my mind. So focusing on things like infrastructure, like the city has been doing over the last couple of years, but being sure that's well-communicated. And as Nate referred to, being proactive in those approaches to equipment upgrades at the fire department and the police station and that infrastructure that is growing older as Ironton has become quite old is another approach that I would take as well. Thank you.
And thank you. Sarah?
First off, I want to say, George, go Bobcats and come back anytime to get those last two classes. But really, I think focusing on police, fire, water, drivable roads, the things you have to do to be in compliance are important. I think we've seen a lot of awesome improvements, and thank you for everyone who's helped push that forward. Our city government, I think, is doing a pretty good job on the roads right now. I have not seen very many potholes lately, which I'm happy about. And really, I think it just is looking at the budget and determining what you have to do first and then what will make the quality of life better second.
Thank you. And Bob?
Okay. Yeah, I've been through probably about 30 budgets, putting them together over my career as being a city council mayor and vice mayor. Nate really hit all the high points while he was talking about. But I was back before him when we were living on grants, and grants is a, it's a poor way of, I think, doing things. It's like we had what was called the Cops Fast Grant. And that's when I was mayor, and we hired eight new police officers, and they were on, I mean, it really made a difference in the city. But at the end of that, the way the plan is, it says that we're going to give you the money for two years, and at the end of that, you need to be self-efficient and keep them working. Well, needless to say, that was back in the older times, and the grant ran out, and so we had to, I had to lay off six of the officers. I kept four of them, or two of them, but I laid off four. Today, like Nate said, we got a good carryover. We've been fortunate for getting windfalls from different situations, and so we are in pretty decent shape right now.
Thank you very much. We'll begin now with George, who will start the next question.
I wish this one was a few more minutes.
Pardon?
I wish this one was a couple more minutes, but-
The net, well, I'll ask a question.
Yes.
Okay, and then, just so the audience knows, I gave all the questions only as the candidates arrived this evening, but so I wouldn't have to repeat it to them. I thought it would work better if they were able to see it. So here it is for the benefit of the audience. Ironton includes a wide range of neighborhoods and residences. How do you plan to engage people from all parts of the community, especially those whose voices aren't always heard in city decisions?
Right now, I feel that a lot of the residents of Ironton and the city government has got a big separation. We need to be very transparent with each and every one here. What I would like to do, if it would be possible, I would like to take every citizen of Ironton, throw them in a great big old pot, put in some ice water, some Jell-O, and stick them in the refrigerator, and then we would gel and we would come together. There's what we need. We need unity in this town to where everybody is looking out for everybody. We need their voices to be coming to whoever sits on council, because I think there are 7,000-some registered voters, and those people have got ideas that we're not hearing. We need to hear them. So that was, I would just bring unity to Ironton would be my main concern with that.
Thank you. Troy?
Yes, so as of now, the way that I'm hearing from residents is knocking on doors as the campaign's going on, so I apologize if you've had to see my face on your front doorstep at some point over the last few weeks. But moving forward, I think it's just being involved as a city government. But moving forward, I think it's just being involved as a city government. We have to understand, as George mentioned, the needs of the residents and where they foresee some of the issues in their day-to-day lives. For myself as a whole too, I really try to just be involved in the community in some different groups. So I do want to shout out the Kiwanis of Ironton for being here after their meeting has just ended and joining us for this event too. But as a whole, we just have to be visible as a government and be available to be reached if any four of us up here are elected into public office. We have to be able to connect with residents and talk with them about any issue.
Sarah?
I think one of the benefits of our community is that I think our government is kind of accessible. I just walked into the mayor's office, last mayor, not this one, last mayor. And I asked her, can I fill that pothole? It has been tearing up my car. And I got someone to donate the asphalt and we put it in there, tamped it down. I think the city ended up having to pay for it later because of a union grievance. But anyway, I was able to just walk into the mayor's office and speak. If there's one thing I think needs to be improved, it's uploading the minutes to the website. I know that the council meetings are on YouTube and people can access them. But having updated recent information listed on the website, I know that's probably not council's job, but I think we could help share that information out to residents.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah.
What your question is, is Ironton includes a wide range of neighborhoods and residents, and that's absolutely true. And what I have tried to do, of course, I have VC tool around. And almost, I'd say eighty percent of the people come in there to patronize my business, to get something, anything, you know, whatever. But they always nail me because I'm there all the time. I mean, I'm there, open up nine to four, four-thirty. And I get to talk to a lot of different people. Plus, you know, I'm on the cemetery board, which fits being in touch with the people that have losses. I'm part of Ironton Alive and I have been previously part of Lawrence County Museum.
Thank you. And Nate?
Well, I've always tried to stay engaged with our community. Volunteered for many different things and many different groups, including Ironton and Bloom, Friends of Ironton. Do all kinds of volunteer work for my church. But I'll tell you how I stay most engaged, is I've got three children that I think play every sport that's possible. And if you ever, if you see me up here and you're like, I've seen that guy, but I don't know who he is. You've probably seen me on a basketball court or on a soccer field. And I'm always talking to somebody on a Saturday or whatever night it is. So, and I'm always open to do that because I feel like it's my job. So that's how I try to stay engaged with the community, being involved with youth and youth sports. I always try to sponsor a team or a basketball game. I try to buy somebody, a pair of shoes that can't afford it. Because I think, you know, that's important as far as being engaged with our community. It starts with the kids.
Thank you. The next question will go to Troy. I'd like to just give a bit of background before asking this question. Thanks to the Tribune, they gave citizens an opportunity to express concerns. I've tried to create open-ended questions tonight, not to share my opinion or needs about the pothole in front of my house. But, yeah, write that down. But these were specific enough that I thought it would give you an idea of where you might go in your discussion. We're going to give three minutes to this so that you can extrapolate. Many residents have raised concerns about issues like homelessness, trash and maintenance in public spaces such as a mound of trash at the water park, downtown building deterioration, and how code enforcement might benefit that. What specific areas do you believe most need attention? And how would you address them? You may add others. You may speak to these.
Awesome. That's a great question. And in a lot of my campaigning thus far, this is the first campaign I've ever run, knocking on people's doors. It's really fun to have a conversation about issues like this and topics like this, to really feel engaged in the community and understand where people are coming from. The thing that I've heard most throughout these last few months is there's a big focus from a lot of residents on the downtown area. And not just that we have buildings that don't have businesses or ones that are deteriorating. It's that people want to feel a part of a community that is, for lack of a better term, just walkable. Where you can walk down the street and go to a new restaurant. You can go to a new locally-owned shop of some sort. And downtown is the place to do that. I know there's been pushes over the last few years. You have some really cool things coming into Ironton too. But a lot of times, people just don't know the timeline of some of these things. So that's been one of the things I've heard the most whenever I've been talking to folks is improving downtown and feeling a part of that community with downtown. I know a lot of people feel a part of Ironton, mostly thanks to Ironton football. Go Tigers! But at the end of the day too, there has to be something else available. So the more festivals that we can have downtown, the more parades and celebrations of being from a small town in Ohio that we can have, the more downtown will improve over time too. And with that too, we have to be able to bring in new businesses. I know some people up here on council have been great business leaders and bringing in new businesses over the years as well. But that's an ever-changing cycle that we have to keep up with to be able to invest in the community and offer good infrastructure and good business for people to come in and provide to our community is a really important thing to me too. So that would be my answer as far as downtown is the most important to me moving forward.
Thank you. Sarah?
Right, I definitely think code enforcement is important. We're like a lot of towns in the Rust Belt. We have aging infrastructure, businesses that have left, whenever industries have left. And there are problems that aren't going to be solved overnight, but I think code enforcement can help. It's hard to recruit businesses whenever our buildings downtown are not able to be inhabited. Like I moved a business downtown a few years ago and I went and looked at every single available space and there was nothing that was ready for me to move into. Ironton Alive had a running book of what was available. And there just wasn't anything that had floors or plumbing, you know? And there are issues with the outsides of these buildings too, but these are not unique issues. So I think it's important to look at policies that are working elsewhere. Like I think Hazard, Kentucky is a great example. They have instituted policies that create a progressive vacancy rate. So the longer that you stay vacant, the more you have to pay to keep that building not being used if you're not making updates on it. So if there's a building in our downtown that someone is hanging on to, not making improvements on, no one is renting it, I think that there should be a cost to that. Because vacancy and blight, it raises our crime, it makes people feel more comfortable littering. If we have buildings that are taken care of, then people want to take care of those spaces too. And I've talked to some people, they're like, I've gone to this little downtown with this historic, all these historic buildings like Ironton has and they're filled with ice cream shops and artisans. Like, why can't we have that here? And it's because we need people to take care of those spaces. We need to respect them ourselves. We need people who own these buildings to respect them, and I think that policy could help with that problem. And as far as the unhoused population, I think council has done something with that recently with camping, if I saw that right, in one of the council meetings. But I think it would also be nice to have a one-stop shop with all the resources. I know the CAO has a lot of resources, but maybe having a place where everything is listed out and working on growing those resources for our community. Because I don't think that we have everything we need to prevent unhoused folks.
Thank, thank you. Bob?
Yeah. I think that the number one thing we need to do is increase our code enforcement. You know, we've got, I think, one person that goes out and does it, and then there's a part-time one too. But it's like, there's lots of different things in here. Like when you talk about the trash maintenance in public spaces such as at Water Park. You know, it's a problem that needs taking care of. And if we can maybe use some court workers or something like that on a daily routine to go through and pick up would work out well. As far as the downtown building deterioration, some of the buildings are relying on grant funding. And in order to get grant funding, you have to go through a lot of steps to get it. So people bought up the building when they were cheap and they went so far on trying to get grants to continue to do the repair work. I think there's a lot of good things out there that's coming though, that's going to really clean up a lot of areas. And it, you know, basically, I think the code enforcement is where we need to concentrate more than just, you know, going out and, you know, get somebody to clean this up or clean that up. And you can't, you can't make people fix up buildings. They buy them and the ones that, sometimes they own them and they don't do a thing to them. But I think that we could probably file a suit and take it away from them and tear it down, whatever we need to do to clean it up. But we work on this issue problem nearly every council meeting.
Thank you. Nate?
I just want to talk about a few things that we've done in the eight years that I've been on council. Kind of to Sarah's point, we did have passed a law requiring vacant property registration. So if a property is vacant, is not listed for sale, and it doesn't have a building permit, it must file for registration and pay a fee. We have passed legislation for chronic nuisance property. If it has multiple calls from police, the owner will be fined. We have passed legislation saying it's illegal to camp in public areas. We've fully funded our code enforcement, zoning and code enforcement. We've got one full-time and three part-time employees. We've established a family reunification dollars. This will help transient and displaced people return back to their community with a one-way bus ticket. We've allotted $100,000 to our demolition fund each of the last four years. This is to go towards tearing down homes that are condemned and not inhabitable. So what I'd like to do, those are accomplishments and I'm very proud of those. I think those help. I would like to talk about just first perceptions, you know, first impressions mean a lot. We have five major entrances into our city. And I would like to see us as a city go in with either corporate or nonprofit sponsors, kind of like Adopt a Highway, but adopting entrance. And I would like to have the city match along with either corporation or nonprofit that might be interested in doing that to make a great first impression in our community when you first come in. Maybe it's just as simple as pick the weeds in the roundabout, or maybe it's something as, let's build a beautiful flowerbed. Something like that that's going to make a great first impression. I would like to really partner with our community in making that happen. I know the university would also be a great partner for that. As far as the downtown, I echo, and one of my goals is, I want to make Ironton the best place to live and raise a family. And those first impressions mean a lot. Having a great downtown means a lot. I want to make it a postcard downtown, just like everybody else here. I want it to be that Hallmark downtown, like my wife makes me watch Hallmark movies with her, but anyway, that Hallmark downtown. So I would like to have a grant established with the city for things like facade, paint, and signage. Some things that businesses might not be able to afford downtown. So I'd like to have some discussions and some strategy with the mayor and council on how we might be able to implement something like that.
George?
Okay, I want to probably strike on something here that might not be right. But I think a lot of our problem with the homelessness in Ironton is a lot of our drug rehabs. Personally, I think Ironton has too many drug rehabs. I think that once these people come, I talked to a gentleman that come from, all the way from Georgia. He did his time there. They put him out on the street. He had no place to go. What are they doing? We can all figure out what's going on. I don't have to spell this out. But we need to keep a better eye on our drug rehabs when those people are excused from their time that they have been here. There needs to be transportation to get them back to their home, where they come from. I'm not against helping people by far. A lot of you, Mark knows me, he knows what I do. But I want to, I want to think that we should try to help those people, get back to their residence, get back to where they can live a wealthy life with their families. Not being here with sleeping on the streets, eating out of garbage cans. We need to help them get a real life. I think we should do work parties to help clean up our town. We've got the river right here, the riverbank. We've got a jewel right there that we need to take care of. We can get people to come in, different groups, and clean up the riverbank along with our downtown area. Me personally, I wouldn't mind to taking on a project like that and being a better leader. Because I believe in myself, I'm a leader. I'm not a follower. So we could seek grants to get our facades fixed up on our buildings, the fronts of them, get them painted, windows and stuff in them. We can do that. And the water park, I know what that's like. I work right beside of it. I work right there. I manage the gun store here in town. I clean that parking lot up daily from the transients and everything that go over and sleep. So we need to be, we need to get a better hold of that to where, you know, if, like Nate said, if somebody drives downtown and they see that and they're in here looking for a residence or they want to bring a business to town, that's going to be the first thing that's going to deteriorate. And we need to work hard on that right there.
Thank you. And Troy?
I started with that one.
Oh, you started with that one?
I mean, I can go again.
So it is now time to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Here's the fifth question, and Sarah will take the lead. Looking ahead, what do you see as one of the biggest challenges Ironton is likely to face over the next four or five years? And how should the city begin preparing now?
I think it's a shrinking tax base and increasing costs. And I think we're kind of already preparing with things like the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities group that has come together and they've started talking about trails and ways that we can activate our waterfronts and all of our resources for recreation. We have a lot of resources here. We have a beautiful river. I think we need to think about ways that our economy can work besides just what factories we can bring here. How can we transition to different types of economies and make it easier to, make it easier to live here and to make money here and to start businesses here and to utilize the resources that we do have.
Thank you. Bob?
Looking ahead for five years, I think that what we need to do, and what we've been doing, is make sure that we can keep a balanced budget. Nate said we have quite a bit of money in the account now, but a lot of it, one-time monies that came in were promised other monies to come in. Until it gets here, we've got to be careful about overspending. And we have already got a five-year projected amount of budget, what we want to have. But if anything, if anything would just not show up the way we projected, do we not, we have to be able to get in and do something different. And I think, you know, everything we're saying here about the riverfront, there's a lot of things that's happening there right now. And the buildings, there's things happening there. I mean, there is so many projects that's unbelievable. But I think our city budget is the biggest thing because I do not want to raise water bills or sewer rates or I don't want to raise anything. bills or sewer rates, or I don't want to raise anything. I've always been the last one to say yes, but that's only when it's covering what it's supposed to cover. You know, there's enterprise funds or greater funds, and if you, an enterprise fund like your water and wastewater and garbage, they all have to be self-sufficient. The city, we charge the residents exactly, nearly exactly what we have to pay to provide those services. But the other issues there is that we have to keep a balanced budget.
Tony?
Thank you.
Nate, please?
I know you said one thing, but there's three things that keep me up at night, and I'm going to try to hit them real quick. The first one is sanitary and storm sewer separation. This is an unfunded federal EPA mandate. Just real quick, our sewer lines, where our water and sewer lines in our city, okay, some of them are older, and there's a trough on the top where the sanitary sewer will go, and there's a, in the bottom, our storm sewer will go. In rain events, water will come in, and it'll flood up, and it'll combine with the sanitary sewer. The EPA says that's something that we need to have fixed, and that's, no joke, millions and millions of dollars. So that's something that keeps me up at night. And so how to, it's a huge challenge, and what we're trying to do right now is be proactive in attacking that, trying to identify ways that we can fix that and try to do that on a step-phase basis in negotiation with EPA. The other is PFOS chemicals that have been released in the Canal River, where there's another EPA mandate. We're going to have to be able to upgrade our water plant and put additional filters, filtration systems to have safe water for our residents. And then recently, I've sat in meetings where there's a proposal to eliminate property tax in the state of Ohio. In doing that, that would eliminate inside millage for the city, which would be about a $600,000 loss in revenues that we use to fund our police and fire. Not only would that hurt us as the city and our general fund and things we use to fund for our city, it would also hurt schools and anybody else that relies on property tax funds.
Thank you. George?
I foresee infrastructure as being one of our biggest problems in the next five years. Like Nate said, the new storm systems that we're going to have to put in, the new sewer lines, the new water lines, because most of that stuff is, it's ancient. It's Fred Flintstone day, some of it is. So we've got to prepare ourselves for that. We need to be going to workshops ahead of time, we need to be taking classes, we need to be talking with adjoining cities and counties of how they have addressed it, to see if that would be a model for us that we could use to help us get through these troubling times. We need to be better stewards with our money. We have got to stay within our ways and means. We don't need to be looking in the box, we need to be looking out of the box of ways to bring stuff in. So Wayne National, as Sarah mentioned, there's so much stuff that we could do from there. Years ago, I tried to get a Wayne National Trail brought in to Ironton. Council kicked me out of it, but we tried it, and I think that would be a great thing that we could do. If you just look at the Parkup in West Virginia, the Hatfield and McCoy Trail, the one over right now in Colton, Kentucky, they make thousands, millions of dollars off of that, that we could bring people into town here. So that's what I think we need to do.
Thank you. And Troy?
So I don't have anything that actively keeps me up at night, but if I am elected, similar to what Nate said, there will be a lot of issues that keep me up at night that I'm starting to think about. Just to kind of echo what other people said, too, the infrastructure issues that we have, they can't wait five years to be talked about. So it's being proactive and bringing forward new revenue to where we can fund a lot of these projects as well, but it's kind of a circular problem because if we're not bringing in new tax revenue by new businesses and new industries into town either, we won't have the tax base to do a lot of these projects. And if we can't do the projects, we won't bring in new businesses and new industries. So that has to be the focus, is being proactive and trying to bring in those new businesses into town, too. Just because with the water lines and continual road projects and sewer system updates, all those different things, if they're not paid attention to for five years, it'll be too late. So that's, at this moment, as I'm running, it is kind of what keeps me up at night, but if I'm elected, it'll be even more so, similar to Nate.
Thank you. So I promised that there would be six questions, and each of the six candidates would get to start one. So we have a complex issue now. I have an extra question. So the only fair way I can think to do this is whoever makes the largest contribution to the Rotary Club. So we're going to flip a coin, and Bob, you won. So the last question is, to close, what is your vision for Ironton's future, and how do you hope residents will remember you as a candidate and potential council member?
I've seen Ironton through its ups and downs over the years I've been here, from economic shifts to infrastructure struggles, and I know what it takes to find solutions that are practical, affordable, and rooted in common sense. I believe our focus must remain on three key areas: economic growth that creates jobs and supports small businesses, the infrastructure that's reliable, which is water, streets, and services that meet the needs of the family and future development, and the main one here is the community pride, continuing to restore our neighborhoods, improve safety, and invest in projects to make people proud to live in Ironton. Now I'm running again because I believe our best days are still ahead. We've made progress, but there's more work to do involving the infrastructure, supporting local businesses, and continuing to build pride in our neighborhoods. From my experience in both business and city government, I know how things get done responsibly, transparently, and with the community's best interests at heart. So tonight, I'm asking for your support, not just for me, but for the city of Ironton's future. Together, we can keep this city moving forward. I'm Bob Clear, and I'd be honored to be, earn your vote for Ironton City Council. Thank you, and God bless Ironton.
Nate?
Eight years ago, I was asked, "Why are you running for city council?" And I have the same answer now as I did eight years ago, and that is, I'm going to steal a look from Craig because I share the same sentiment, it's for my kids. It's for my kids, it's for your kids, and it's for their kids. That's why I'm running for city council. I love Ironton, I love living here. I love the community and the family that I'm surrounded by. I love going to the grocery store and talking to 12 people, even though I'm trying to get out of there. I love going to the same church I've gone to for the last 44 years and praying with my family and the community. I love going to football games and basketball games and soccer games and cheering on my kids and your kids. I love it. I love my kids can walk to school and back and be safe. I'm going to run this for my kids and your kids. I want to give my kids the same thing that I've been blessed with. My goal in city government is to make Ironton the best place to live and raise a family, and I'm not going to stop until we get there. I'm committed. So I'm asking for your vote, I'm asking for your confidence for four more years. Thank you.
George?
Well, like I said a minute ago, I think we need to unify Ironton. The people that sit here today are hard-working Appalachian people. They are not people that like to get in front of this or that. They, but they, their voice, they want their voice to be heard. So I think what we should do is, for an example, once a month, whoever's elected to council, maybe would meet at a neutral spot instead of upstairs at the city building, to where they don't have to feel that they're all watching eyes on, where they can, they're more comfortable, to where they can talk to us, they can give their visions, they can give us their ideas. So with that, that's one of the things that I would want to do, and I would like to, I think that would progress Ironton's future. You know, I was asked the same thing, Nate was, "Why are you running for city council?" I love this town. Believe it or not, I love your kids, your grandkids, always will, whether I make it, win, lose, or draw, I'm still going to make, if you've got a problem, you've got a need, all you've got to do is contact me. I'll be happy to help. I founded an organization 15 years ago called Special Needs Youth Sportsmen. I started out with zero dollars. In six months, I'd raised $39,000. We put on our first event. So we've been 15 years strong. We do four events a year with these kids, and I'm telling you, these are some smart kids that we don't want to, we don't want to see leave this area, whether they be Ironton residents or the county residents. So I think our best bet would be to try to pull together, work together, love one another, and do what we need to do to make Ironton a better place. So with that, I ask for your vote. I'll pray for you tonight, as I do every night, and I just hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you.
Troy?
Since a few of the other candidates have touched on it, on why we're running essentially, why are we up here in front of a microphone for you to listen to? I've told people the answer to that question for myself is, you run where you think you can make a difference. You don't run for public office if you don't anticipate making some kind of difference, and I commend all the other candidates up here for doing that as well, because it takes a lot, it's a lot of time for all of us up here to do this, and in some way, we all want to support Ironton moving forward, too. My vision for Ironton moving forward is that you just kind of forget we exist because the day-to-day of your life is easier than it was previously, whether that is you don't have any potholes in your street, or your water's not brown moving forward, and all those infrastructure projects that council and the city are always working on. I want those to be completed in a well-communicated manner to where your day-to-day life is so good, you forget that there is a city government. That is, in my mind, the role of a government over time, too. And something I hope you remember about myself, as I've been up here talking with you for about the last hour and a half or so, is that I made you laugh at least like three times. I saw all of you giggle at some point, so that's not all I hope you remember, but in reality, I want you to remember that I care about Ironton, and same as the other people up here, we all care about Ironton in some capacity because we live here and we want to see it thrive. And essentially, in my day-to-day life and my professional work, I tell everyone across Ohio, I'm from Ironton, and luckily, they all know where it's at generally, whether it's because of football only, or because they passed by and went to another state. But everyone that I speak to across the state knows that I'm proud to be from here, and I hope that's what you take away from me this evening. And as they've all asked for your support as well, I will also ask for your support, too. I would love to have your vote, if you're able to vote early, we're on November 4th coming up. I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Troy. Sarah?
My vision is for Ironton to be an easier place to live well, nice places to visit, easier to open a business in downtown, amenities for families, making it an attractive place to be. I would like to capitalize on our history and our natural beauty. We have the state and the Appalachian Regional Commission putting some serious weight behind those assets, and I'd like us to elevate them as well. We have the Underground Railroad sites that have been marked recently, iron furnaces, we have the Rone, the Tank Stadium. I think there's a lot of cultural and heritage tourism opportunities. I want people to be able to move easily and safely through our downtowns, to walk to the riverfront, to linger at local businesses, to be able to spend time safely and not be worried and not feel unsafe because of vacant or derelict buildings that they have to walk past, or streets that aren't lit well. And really, I'd like to see as much collaboration as possible. We have so many people doing awesome things in our community. If we could all just row in the same direction, I think that we'd get pretty far. And again, just like everyone else will say, I would appreciate your bet. And I'll wrap it up early, and we can all get out of here.
What strikes me this evening is the number-one resource of Ironton. I heard it from each one of these candidates, and it's Ironton's people. And I have a difficult situation, and I guess you do, too, because there's only four slots to vote for, and there's six fine, fine candidates. To live in a town like that says it's a hopeful town. Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you if you're on the museum board, or you work for Ironton Alive, or you're working your tail off down there at the Rone, friends of Ironton, incredible what those folks do. And I think it'd be appropriate if we gave our council candidates, I am sure they'll stay around and answer your questions. Thank you.